Two minutes, two seconds. I'm waiting for India. Sorry, I'm talking with Mike in the back. He's probably like, "What are you doing, you weirdo?" Good evening. I would like to call our meeting to order. This is the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Directors. I'd like to call our meeting to order this evening, thank you, and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now I would like to invite the East High JROTC forward for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll be hearing from you later on this evening, but it's always awesome when we have students involved and I don't have to lead the pledge by myself. I love it. So, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda then is our mission statement, and Jesse Knight will read that. Thank you.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Jesse. The next item on our agenda this evening, which is for most of our audience that's here tonight, is an awesome kudo. This is our Schwartz and Druber Award, and I'm so excited to see so many people from Highland Elementary here tonight. This is an awesome award that has been given. It was established in 2002 by a former superintendent, Arnold Schwartz and Druber. Arless, not Arnold, sorry. Arless, Arless. I was thinking Schwarzenegger. Arless, Schwartz and Druber, to recognize the school that had the highest gains in the Iowa test of development. And so, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman. I know we have Mr. Willand here. We've got some, like I said, a huge bunch of staff. So I'm going to turn it over to you all, but we are so excited to have you here tonight. Dr. Lindeman.
Absolutely. So, we give the Iowa assessments once a year, and as Shanley said, this assessment... This award has really been given out over the past years. Actually, I was going to look and see, since 2002. Since the 2002-2003 school year. And so, we are really, really excited. Every year, we just kind of wait to see who is going to earn that, and so we announce it at the opening day. And so, at that meeting, at our welcome back ceremony, we announced that the winners of this year's Schwartz and Druber Award was Highland Elementary. And the other thing I would say is that it isn't always the school that has the very highest performance rates, but it is the school that always has the highest growth from the year prior. So, in this case, I would tell you that Highland had amazing growth in reading, and math, and science, really across the board. And so, they just did some amazing work this year. And so, I think it would be appropriate to have Principal come up, Principal Willand, to come up and receive the award and maybe make some comments. And you can invite whoever you might want to come. They're all welcome to stand behind you to support you, but whatever you'd like to do.
We want to know all your secrets.
Yes. And make sure the green light's on the little button there. It says push. There you go.
I don't know if I've got all the secrets, but I will tell you this. We have the most amazing staff in Waterloo. I've been saying that for three years. Can we give them a big round of applause? Also, I want to thank our parents, our students, and our community, the Highland community. They've bought into our systems. Five years ago when we started this, we had a long journey ahead of us, and we've been close to winning this a couple times. So, we've been, we finished second, I think, a couple times. So, to win it this year is phenomenal for our building. It's phenomenal for our staff, and again, I couldn't be prouder. Thank you. Can I say one more thing? I want to tell, Darren Hannah has been huge for us. I cannot say it enough. Thank you, Darren. He's been instrumental in our leadership team in getting a focus on literacy and our math, and I can't say it enough. He's just been huge for us. Thank you again, Darren.
Are you sure nobody else wants to come up and talk? We love it when we hear from you guys. You came all this way. Okay, will you come up for a picture at least, please? All right, come on.
Yes, okay.
I don't have to be in it. I just have to hand it to you.
You have to be in it. You have to be in it. Highland staff, the other thing we would tell you is that we will hand-deliver the trophy to your building, and however you want us to, however you want to receive it, we will do whatever. So, we've had people have us come after school. We've had people plan an assembly to bring it and present it to the kids. Whatever you plan is great with us. So, we will bring it to your building because the celebration is not yet over.
The bathroom's gonna empty out quite quickly.
I offered for them to stay, and they were like, "No, I think we're gonna go." So, all right, that's awesome. We're so happy for Highland. Thanks again for coming out tonight. So... All right, the next item on our agenda then is Item B, and this is the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence Award and the Governmental Financial Officers Certificate of Excellence Award. This is on page three, and this is just for information only. We actually don't have a motion to pass tonight. But I am going to turn this over to Michael Coughlin, our Chief Financial Officer, to talk a little bit more about this. And we do have a couple people, Deb and Jeff, here from our business office as well, to talk a little bit more about this awesome award. We're very happy to have this tonight on our agenda as well. So, Mr. Coughlin.
Well, flying under the radar of all of the exciting things that happen in the district is people that have to handle the money. And we currently are in that time of year that we've just finished our, all of our reports to the state, and the auditors are here this week as we speak to do the final field work before they produce the annual audit and the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which we call the CAFR, which really is the audit, and then it has many other exhibits of demographics and history, and it really does tell an interesting story of the district if you look through that. So, as we have looked for many years now, to just certify to the district, to our constituents, the stability and the accuracy of the financial records, we have been turning in our CAFR to two different organizations every year, that they are both national organizations, and they review our CAFR under their standards to make sure that we are representing accurately and fairly the financial condition of the district. So, we have been doing it with the Association of School Business Officials, international or ASBO. There's also a local Iowa ASBO that we're quite involved in. And then there's also, as Shanley said, the Governmental Financial Officers Association. And that would also include other municipalities. So, the city and the county belong to that organization as well. So, it's not just a school organization. So, we are examined at a little different level than just the school organization. So, we come under the scrutiny of that every year. And I was pleasantly surprised, as I was putting this together this year, that this is our 21st year of getting this award. So, it's been many years of consistency and following the rules and the laws, and we're just happy to receive it and be able to accomplish that for the district. And I do want to introduce and recognize our business manager, Jeff Summerfeld, and Head of Purchasing, Deb Jacobs. And both of them are very instrumental in all the things that happen in the business office. But in the audit in particular, they are the two that do most of the legwork. They do most of the legwork of getting it all together and answering all the questions when the auditors come, which they were pretty much inundated with today. As you know, we have a new set of auditors this year, and part of that process is they ask lots and lots and lots of questions to get a foundation of where we're at and tie numbers from the previous years. And it just kind of gets them going as they have a five-year contract to do our audit. So, it is a lot of work. We've been able to prepare for them and print out a lot of reports, and ask a lot of questions, and dig into a lot of numbers. So, it will be a pretty extensive week of questions this week, but they're doing well. So, when we put this in the exhibit, it was requested that the whole office come. The other people all had appointments and other commitments today. So, I'll say that the two most important people came, so...
Deb and Jeff, will you be sure to please pass our congrats on to all of your staff? And I will admit, I'm one of the people that asks for those of you who work so hard on the audit and also on these two very great distinctions to be here tonight, because I want you to hear from us directly how much we appreciate what you do. Because as Michael said, it is sort of behind the scenes, but it's so important. Without what you do, none of this stuff runs without the two of you and your staff. So, I just want to say a heartfelt thanks, and the rest of the board can jump in at any time, too.
Well, and I want to apologize. I was one that initiated a new auditor, but I think it will be good after this year. No, it was Shanley and Lyle, too. It wasn't just me.
I was asking you to come to a meeting.
I was one of three. But I do think that, fresh set of eyes, and obviously, it's a little more work for you guys this year, so maybe after this year, they'll have the baseline, and we'll go from there. Yeah, yeah. But so, but I think that with all the awards and what you guys get, it's just, you're the unsung heroes of the district. Because if we didn't have the money, we couldn't do what we do. So, we just really appreciate it, and I know you guys get lots of questions from other people, too, and you do a great professional job of handling them. I never get any complaints on how rude the business office is. So, I appreciate that, and thank you, and all your staff, if you, as Shanley said, pass that on. Because truly, without the job you guys do, our job would be a lot harder to even approve a budget. So, thank you.
That's it?
No.
My last comment. I agree with everything that was said, and I listen to other superintendents in other districts talk about financial issues that crop up. And so, I, this is my first superintendency. This is my fifth year, so I don't have any other departments to compare it to. So, when I say you're the best I've ever worked with, it may not hold as much water, but I would tell you that I hear, I hear things from other districts, and, you know, in Iowa and out of Iowa. And so, and I think the district, the staff that we have working with the finances is amazing. So, thank you all for what you do, all of you.
In 21 years, that's a pretty long run, so, pretty impressive.
And if they're really bad again next year, Deb let us know.
All right, thank you both very much. And Mr. Coughlin, thank you. All right, then the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. And I would like to ask if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board? And if so, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, there goes my audience. So... With that, I'm going to actually ask for a little leeway from the board this evening. We have some students here. Item F is actually not the next item on our agenda, but so that these young men can get on with their evening, I'm going to ask that we go ahead and move that up on the agenda, if that's okay with the board? Okay, wonderful. Then we will move to Item F, and then we'll come back and take care of C, D, and E. So, Item F is on page 35, and this is the East High School JROTC Field Trip to Leavenworth, Kansas. And I know we have Lieutenant Colonel Glenn Keith here this evening, and I'm going to go ahead as he comes forward and put this motion on the table. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the East High JROTC Field Trip to Leavenworth, Kansas, October 12th through the 13th of 2018.
Same.
Thank you. All right, and with that discussion, I don't even know these guys are...
We had people ready.
All right, well, with that, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Colonel Keith this evening.
All right, well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for having us here this evening, and I want to thank Cadet Thorne and Cadet Taylor for being here this evening. They're going to, they're going to tell you the things that they've been doing to train up for this, and I'll give you a little bit of oversight of some of the physical and mentally demanding skills they're going to have to participate in. And then we'll close it with a video from last year of our Raider team. But we're asking for an overnight trip down to Leavenworth, Kansas, and that is not to the federal prison. That's to Fort Leavenworth. But Leavenworth High School is hosting a Raider meet. We'll have, I believe, there's 22 high schools, so the Midwest will be competing. And this will be our first time that our Raider team has traveled out of state to compete. We traditionally have competed in Camp Dodge, Iowa. So, this is a good opportunity to travel out of state, see some different teams. And the neat thing about it is the day before, we're actually going to travel to the National World War I Museum there in Kansas City. So, it's going to be a great learning event for them and to really be immersed in some military histories there. So, I'm really excited about that. We are taking 12 cadets to Leavenworth. I've got, we're a coed team. So, of the 12 cadets, we have three female cadets, and we have a good mix. We have six sophomores and freshmen, and six juniors and seniors. So, we have a good mix of experience and also helping train those freshmen and sophomore so they can take into those leadership roles. But I'm going to go ahead, and if you want, you gentlemen, come on over here, and you can, Cadet Thorne, if you want to start off. So, these are my, this is my afternoon commander who trains the cadets. The cadets are in charge of figuring out what the training is. And then this is my morning commander, which is Cadet Taylor. So, Cadet Thorne. Talk about the events, talk about what you've been doing.
All right, well, for the past few weeks, we've been doing, as Colonel said, we had been doing afternoon and morning practices. And during those practices, we've been using the weight room to try to strengthen ourselves and our teammates. As Colonel had said earlier, we do have six sophomore, freshmen, and six junior-senior mix, so decent mix. Some of the events are, would be a five-kilometer terrain run.
And what are you wearing? You're in full uniform?
It'd be full AC, so it'd be like the camouflage uniform, the boots, and then, I can't remember, but I think there will be at least one of us wearing a rucksack. And I, as if I'm remembering correctly, that'd be a 10-pound...
Actually, it's a 38-pound rucksack.
Brandon said it was 10, last year, so...
Brad, he just wanted you to do it. He told you it's only 10.
They saw off the backpack as they're running it, so... And then, if you want to hand it over to Cadet Taylor, you can talk about some of the skills that you're going to start learning.
All right, well, some of the skills that we're going to be learning this week further on is the rope bridge, how to tie a tie, and how to make a seat out of a rope, and basically, yeah, that's it.
It's a, what's it, what's rope bridge supposedly doing? You know, it's like crossing a what?
Crossing a river.
Yeah, so they actually build a rope bridge with all their equipment, and it's a time-based event. And you also have some other skills, training with first aid, and a lot of physically demanding events. So, what's neat about this competition, too, is that the top female and the top male, regardless of what team they're on, if they're fastest time, most push-ups, and stuff like that, they're going to be recognized as the iron cadet. So, outstanding work. So, you'll see here, we got a little video from last year, kind of shows you what it looks like. And you'll see this lap one, lap two, lap three. Those are, lap one is a freshman leadership, education and training, skill level one. All of them have to do white fours. I don't have sound. Can I? Hello? Darren. So, those are our Raiders. They are the... They represent the most physically fit and mentally fit of the Trojan Battalion. So, they put a lot of hard work in, six in the morning every day, and then staying after school to work on, work on these. So, they're, they've put a lot of hard work in, and I think it would be a great opportunity to go down to Kansas and compete.
So, what year are both of you?
I'm a sophomore, handle that, too.
Okay. Okay. So, were you in this video? I thought I saw you in the video. Yeah.
So, senior, what's your future plans after you graduate? Nice. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming out this evening. It's been a very long day for you. You've been up since five, at least. So, thank you for coming to School Board today, telling us about this.
And we want to hear your results.
Yes, we always want to hear how you do.
So, we want you to come back and tell us how you did.
We will. Do you, gentlemen, have any other activities that you do besides JROTC?
Wrestling?
And Thorne, you're all JROTC, right? Yeah, and work. We would add some other folks here tonight, but unfortunately, between work, volleyball, and other activities. So, our cadets stay heavily involved in a lot of activities.
Your cadets present themselves very well, which is really great. So, I just wanted you to have that feedback. Very impressive.
And thank you to both of you for letting me put you on the spot and have you come up here and do the pledge. I know you know the pledge, but I appreciate you coming up and giving me support. That's awesome. So, thank you.
Have a great trip.
Yes, enjoy the area. Get lucky, get some barbecue.
Oh, we will. I spend a lot of time at Fort Leavenworth, not in the prison.
All right, well, if there's nothing further than I want to go ahead and approve this. So, I would ask all those in favor of the recommended motion to send the East High JROTC team to Leavenworth, Kansas, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Have a great trip.
Yes, thank you.
Let us know how you do. All right, then we'll go back now to Item C, which is on page eight. Thank you all for letting me move the agenda around a little bit. This is our annual meeting portion for those people who are kind of new to School Board-ness. In September, we used to have School Board elections in September. Going forward, they're going to be tied in November to general elections. But this year, we didn't, this is an off-year for elections, but we still have to do approval of our, for our annual meeting. We do certify our annual report with the Treasurer's Office. We also will rearrange and do some work with the structure of the board tonight. So, with that, I'm going to start with Item C, which is our annual meeting and the financial documents that are being presented by Michael Coughlin. And do you want me to go ahead and put the motion out?
Sure.
Okay. So, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Treasurer Report for the June 30th, 2018, and approve the list of financial institutions as depositories with corresponding maximum amounts in Policy 701.1 Depository of Funds, and place on file the Certified Annual Report 2017 as required by Iowa Department of Education. Thank you, Sue, and a second, Jesse. Excellent. And discussion, I will turn it over, and we all have this document in front of us.
I do want to just skip around a little bit with this as far as the official approval for the reorganizational meeting is on page 12, which is the Treasurer's Report, which is, with all the different categories that we talk about of types of balances, this is basically what's in the bank as of June 30th after all of the bills are paid for the current school year, 1718. So, it will include all of the summer salaries. So, all the expenses are out of there. So, we started the year in the General Fund of little, almost $19 million, $131.2 million of revenue, $128.5 million of expenditures, leaving and ending balance of $21,600,000. Then the Student Activity Account, the Management Levy, the Sales Tax Save Account, the PEPAL, the Debt Service. Enterprise Fund is the Food Service. Internal Service is the Print Shop. And Trust Fund is some scholarships that are given to the district. So, the ending balance... to the district. So the ending balance for the student activity fund was $1.19 million. Management fund is $1.9 million. The save balance was $18,073,000. And that's higher because of the $16 million bond issue that we had last year through the save account. And about half of that has been used for the WCC project. The PEPAL fund ending balance was 1.885. The debt service was $14,400,000. And again, that contains the sinking fund that has the QSCB bond issue in it, that we just, we make payments every year into that account, and it isn't not payable to the bondholder until it's totally expired in its 10-year cycle, which I believe is 2023. So that will sit in that account. The enterprise funds for the food service is just under $20,000. The internal service fund, which is the print shop, was a little over $27,000. And the trust fund usually stays pretty close to zero because the money comes in and goes out at the end of the school year. So there's just a little balance left in that. The depository of banks that we use that go along with the policy on page 25, that we have to declare for the school district, is the Farmers Savings Bank that we use here in town for the majority of our activity, our normal operating fund, and the list of bills that you see every month. Bankers Trust is the bank in Des Moines that does the bond issue handling those funds. And then Wells Fargo is the bank that ICE Jet uses. So all of the payments that come from the state circulate through Wells Fargo, and then they are transferred to Farmer Savings Bank for us. So that is the official part of what I have to report for the organizational meeting, but also with those balances for the Treasurer's Report, we are required to have all of the affidavits of our, all of our accounts. And that's not something that we publish publicly. But this week, with the auditors here, they have all of those, that they send out and get confirmations from all of our banks and so on. So if there's any of you that would like to see official documents of that, we have that and would, would make those available to you if you ever wanted to see those. But I didn't think it'd be a good thing to publish the bank account numbers in the board agenda, so we do it that way. But another thing that I wanted to just give you a little flavor for the end of the year, and I, I gave you a handout, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, because a lot of these numbers are ones that you have seen before, but I just want to give you the ability to do some comparing with other districts our size. So sometimes you can hear a number from me and you go, well, that's a good number, but how do we compare to everybody else? So I just kind of want to give you some information. And page two in your handout, if I can get the screen going here, these are the key measurements that the School Board Association talks about as being critical for the board to examine every year. And it's the certified enrollment, because that's what our funding is based on, the unspent balance of the formula that we have authorized budget to spend, what our cumulative balances. And then there's also a chart of how we treat each year. Of the amount that we generate each year, how much of that have we spent? It's just like your budget at home. You make so much money, how much of that did you spend in an annual picture? Then the solvency ratio is the amount of cash that we have on hand, whether that's healthy. And they, they bring up three other categories, the number, the percentage of revenue spent. Of all the revenue that we get, how much of that did we spend in any given year? Because some of the revenue we get is cash reserve, and it's not all authority budget. But that does factor into the sol, into the solvency ratio. And then salaries and benefits. How much of our budget is for salaries and benefits? When we are a service organization, how are we investing in our people? And there's targets for that, and you can see that on there. About 80% is what we usually, is pretty typical across the state. And then one that you may not have seen before, unless you've looked through the School Board Association handbook for Waterloo, is the new money percentage, what we get from the legislature. And then you compare that to what you settle for, for negotiations. And then what was the result of that? What was the change in salary and benefits from one year to the next? So we'll talk about that. And these are really just to give you something to look at. If you've got questions, if you do some comparing, it just gives you some basic information to look at. So our history of enrollment, you've seen this many times before, but part of the School Board Association's charts that they include is, usually it's the maximum, and then the minimum, and then the median. But we all know the maximum is, is Des Moines, and that throws all of the charts off by quite a bit. So sometimes they're left out. And they're around 35,000 kids. So then you go down to the minimum of 99 kids in a district. And the median is 678. So when we have about 11,000, you can see why we're the sixth or seventh largest district in the state. So this is a peer group enrollment. So these are, these are a little harder to see from the way that they're printed on that. I couldn't change that. But you can see where Waterloo is as far as enrollment. Of the, the larger districts, we're right in the middle. And the little percentage number that's there, and you may need your magnifying glasses, the percentage that's there is our free and reduced percentage. So you can see in our case that our enrollment is just under 11,000, but our free and reduced total is 52.5. Now that has gone down because of CEP, because all we're counting is the direct cert in those buildings. But we are in the process of what we have to do is do a household survey of earnings. And then that will get us back up closer to the 62% to 64% that we've been sitting at for many years. But that just gives you an idea. When you look at some of these districts where Ankeny, which is just to the left of us, a little over 11,000, and therefore in reduced count is 14.5. So there's quite a, quite a contrast in the makeup of these districts. Another important factor in our history is open enrollment. And the top number on this is the open enrollment in, kids that come to us. And the bottom number is the open enrollment out, starting in 2010 through 2018. And then we have the net effect. So in 2010, the net difference was 352 students going out. And that has dropped to 284 in 2018. So the numbers for the cost don't change that much. It's gone down about $200,000. But that's with the cost per student going up through all of those years as well. But that's a good trend. And this gives you an idea of how open enrollment is affecting the other larger districts. So for us, it's about a 2.6% drop in our enrollment. And just about every other UEN district is negative as well. Cedar Rapids and Council Bluffs being between 4% and 6%. And our neighbor of Cedar Falls is the one that's collecting a lot of open enrollment in. They're going up about 4%. The unspent balance this year went to, went from 13.6% to 14.2%. The authorized budget that we have. And the, the maximum, and this is for 17, because I don't have 18 numbers for all the rest of the district yet, the highest is 64%. And the lowest is negative 2. So the median is 18.6. So our 14.2% is relatively right in the middle. And here's even the, the peer group of the UEN districts, and we're sitting right in the middle. So the little, the little square on top of ours is the increase for 18. So it did go up a little bit, but still it's well within an average position for the UEN districts. This is what I was talking about with the annual ratio of what the authorized budget generates on an annual basis, and how did we spend according to that. So it shows that we're, in 13, we spent 3.5% more of the money than we had. And in 17, we spent 4.7 less. And it jumps around a little bit. And I did go into several of the districts, and this is not unusual. You know, because we talk about this all the time, that some years you're going to have some overspending because, because of a certain issue, and other years there's underspending. And it's really a multi-year plan that keeps the, the financial health of the district, not just one year. So this is just the annual change for 17 for all of our, for the UEN peer group. And in that year, in 17, when we were 4.7%, we were actually the highest change in that given year. And when you look over to the far right, there's three districts that saw quite a bit of change on the other direction. But every district has its own story and its own reason, game plan for where they're at. The solvency ratio deals more with the revenue of, of what you're holding, basically in the bank at the end. And we've gone from 8.6% to 14.3%. I didn't add 18 to that. It went up to 16%. So the peer group for solvency ratio, you can see Waterloo pretty much in the middle again, and seeing that basically all of the UEN districts are in pretty healthy situation. This is a chart we've been looking at for several years. When we saw the cuts in revenue from 2009 and built gradually working our way back up through cash reserve, that we are finally showing that the two bottom numbers are fund balance, basically the money in the bank, 21,610, is a little bit greater than the unspent balance of 21,230. So which means we have, all of our authorized budget is now backed by actual cash. We've been chasing that number, as you can see, gradually catching up with it over the last five years. This is a chart on the amount of revenue that we spent, of all the revenue that came in. And we've been sitting right at, most years, about 98%. And it, and you can see on the left that 98.1% is the, is the median for the, for the whole state. So that's very comparable. The salary and benefits, what is the ratio of, what is the percentage of salary and benefits across the state? The median again is 78.6% for 2017. And you can see that we fall right within that range all the way through those years. And this is a, a peer group kind of dealing with the same thing. So when you look at Waterloo, 79.37% of our total budget was salaries and benefits. And of that, 8,812 per student was spent. So you can do a comparative to the other districts of that, of just see how we stack up. Michael, how would this change if you did every district in Iowa? I can do that. I have, they have all of that. Because I could do some with that of just what would be state averages rather than the UENs. And I can prepare something with, with that for you, just to give you an idea.
Yeah, if it's not allowed.
It's not. It's, it's all based in the, either in the School Board Association website or the Forecast Five webs. Interesting to have a state comparison versus just the UEN. Now this is the one that's a little more comprehensive. So I gave you some information to just kind of think about what they're trying to bring out. So the red bar in each year is the percent of new money. So from 13, we got less than half a percent. In 14, 2.8. And then 5.8, 2.6, 1%. And even though it was 1% in 18 and 19, or close to that because of enrollment issues, because we had a decline in enrollment in 18, I'm not saying the right, in the 18 budget, we had a decline in enrollment. Then we had to pay back what we got because of, of declining enrollment in 17. So anyway, so this is the actual new money that we got. Because it's always going to be dependent on whether our enrollment goes up or goes down. So if our enrollment goes down, we're not going to get as much as what the SSA number is. So the last couple of years, it's been about 1%, but the last two years and into 19, we got less than 1%. So as they compare to that, the white bars are all the teacher settlement amounts. Now, the teacher settlement dollar amount is about half of our budget. It's about $60 million. So when you say we only get 1% new money, like in 17, and then you give a settlement of 3.18, that's only of half of the budget. Okay, we still have the, so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but still something that's 50% of your budget, that you're giving away more money than what your new money is. That's a measure that you have to watch. You don't want that in your checkbook. Pardon? You don't want that in your checkbook, so it would be the same applicability here. But what happens with that is you have to look back to all of the previous charts and say that our balances are still increasing means we're changing other things. And we're saving money, or we're making changes. So it's not just a one-picture effect with this. But this is something that you're going to see when people start talking, well, you only got 1% new money, and you're giving away 3% or 4% or 5% of, of salary increases. How do you do that? Well, it means that you have to adjust in other areas. And it's not an apple-to-apple comparison, so. And when you say teacher settlement, that's just what you mean, not any of the other groups we negotiate with? Just teachers. Thank you. Yep. But it's salary and benefits. Yep, but it's salary and benefits. So we are, this is the, the last graph that I've got. So what will follow, and my last chart just talks about, there, there's a lot more comparables to look at, to look at our financial health. It's not just these seven indications. Because all of these mean study and adjustment comparability every year to see how we're going to set up our budget. Because property taxes and our valuation and our staffing ratios and salary comparability to other districts are all really big issues. And as we spend per student. And then you get into bricks and mortar, all the facility needs, and what kind of programs we offer. And when you look at just in, in our district, it's been an amazing transformation with facility and with programs. Where the WCC has come in. And we've been able to do that under the same budget limitations that we've been under with one percent new money. But it's priorities, and it's, and it's looking at the budget. I know I told the Finance Committee that I got a call from a previous superintendent just a couple of weeks ago. And the, and the statue that's named after it, might have been the guy. But I was telling him of where our financial position was, even in light of starting the WCC. And to say it lightly, he was impressed. That you've managed the money and the direction of the district in such a way to be able to do these things. And still keep things in order. And keep things in line, so we're not against a budget crunch. So what's coming next is, is looking at the nineteen budget and doing some forecasting of what that's really going to cost us after we have all the staff hired and everything going. And that will be some reports that the finance, or the Finance Committee will see in the next month or so. And then we'll start on the nineteen-twenty budget with the legislators and so on. So it's a never-ending journey. But we're sitting in good shape to end eighteen with a lot of things to consider in nineteen and twenty. So, any questions?
Nothing? It's real quiet up here on the dais. I'm kind of, we're not usually so unchatty, so.
Well, there's a lot of information there, and it kind of helps you see our numbers compared to everybody else's. So I thought that was kind of interesting, but you can look at it and bring questions later, or. I'll follow up with what Sue was asking about with the state, no, state averages. That's an interesting picture as well.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Is there anything further for Michael then? We'll die, we'll take this home for a little light night reading. Yeah, there we go. So, all right. So the recommended motion then is that the Board of Education approves the treasurer's report. And I would like to ask, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again, Michael, appreciate it. The next item on our agenda then is item D, which is on page twenty-six, and this is the election of board officers. And for that, I will turn it over to our board secretary, Ms. Arnover.
My favorite part of the meeting.
You get to talk.
Okay, so every year at the annual meeting, we do elect a board president and a board vice president. So I will open up the floor for nominations for president.
I nominate Shanley McNally.
Thank you, Aster. We don't need a second on these, so I will entertain a motion to close the nominations then.
So moved.
And a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, so all those in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, five oh, motion carried. So Shanley McNally has been nominated as president of the Board of Education. All those in favor of Shanley serving as president of the board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, you can vote for yourself. And opposed, same sign. Motion carried, five zero. Okay, so I will entertain nominations for the office of vice president.
I nominate Sue.
Thank you, India. And can we get a motion to close the nominations then for the office of vice president?
So moved.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second? Thank you, Aster. I write all these down. So all those in favor of closing nominations for the office of vice president of the board, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay, five zero. So Sue Flynn has been nominated as vice president of the Board of Education. All those in favor of Sue Flynn serving as vice president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. So we will do the oath of office for Sue and Shanley. Let me find it in my packet here. Page twenty-six, thank you, right there. If you guys want to stand, Sue, I will switch positions with you.
Sure. Sure. Yay.
And if you guys will raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of president and vice president of the Board of Education in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do. Thank you.
We're married now. I thought that was a little weird.
Cheers. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Pam.
Yes.
Thank you.
She wasn't that bad.
That was that bad, right? There you go, you did awesome. Then we will move on to item E, which is on page thirty-one. And this is the reorganization of the board. This is the, just the, I guess I would call it the, the nuts and bolts of what we have to do in terms of who signs the checks and does all that good stuff. So, and general housekeeping. So do you want me to read this full motion?
Yes.
Okay. So the recommended motion is that the president of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Shanley McNally, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require her signature. And the vice president of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Sue Flynn, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require her signature in the absence of the president. And the signature plate of Shanley McNally, immediate past president of the Board of Education, be authorized to continue as a valid check signature until a plate for the new president can be obtained. And the superintendent be authorized to invest school district monies prior to allocating these funds toward payment of expenditures in accordance with Board Policy seven oh one point eight. And the Board of Education reaffirms all policies and actions of preceding boards.
So moved.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second? Thank you, Aster. Again, this is just sort of our housekeeping. Is there any discussion on this? Anything, Pam, I need to be, all right. Then all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Our reorganization, or not so much reorganization, is, is, has passed, has moved on, so. Excellent. Well, then, in that we already covered item F, we will move on then to the consent agenda, which consists of five items this evening. Item G, which are the minutes of the September tenth, two thousand eighteen, regular board meeting. Item H, which are personnel appointments and adjustments. Item I, which are bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item J, which is the contract with Hawkeye Community College for driver's education. And item K, board members travel. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item H.
Item H. And item I.
And item J, sorry.
And item J. All right. So then I would entertain a motion to place items G and K from the consent agenda on the table.
So moved.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sue. All those in favor then of approving the minutes of the September tenth, two thousand eighteen, regular board meeting and the item K, board members travel, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item H, which is on page fifty. And give me just a second, and I will get that recommended motion. Which is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second? Thank you, Sue. And discussion?
Yeah, I just, Kingsley.
They wanted to check as far as staffing, how we're looking. And then also, I did notice in the hires, there was quite a bit of special needs para and BIS positions. And just wondering how, how we come to those new hires? Or is it just a lot of transit turnover? Or do we, you know, when no students coming in, do they need a para, that type of thing?
Yeah. So in general, we're doing okay. I mean, we haven't really changed so much as where we were before with their hiring. We're still looking for special need teachers. We're still looking for para educators. And then you still have that math position open that we're still trying to fill. That being said, just so the community knows, I mean, we do cover with other teachers to cover those kind of math openings. But it is something we're still actively looking for. As far as in general, from a special education standpoint, to answer your questions, kind of both. And so some of it is some new positions that, based on the allocation, needs to be, you know, there needs to be somebody that fills that position. Or ultimately, it is a situation of turnover where we have some turnover, people changing over roles. Or going back to your other point, as far as you have individuals, you know, if we, if the IEP team then deems it necessary, there needs to be a para educator that supports a student, then we have to hire somebody for that role. And so it is a couple of different variations that you look at when you see that. I mean, and normally you wouldn't see, normally you would see that on a regular basis where, you know, as we're having kids enter their district, that kind of shifts and changes from a day-to-day standpoint.
Thank you.
Kingsley, can you also talk briefly about, I see on the last page, we have, on the termination section or the resignation section, the difference, if, if there's a individual that's standing in the district, just changing positions, can you explain a little bit?
Yeah, definitely. How that works? Yeah. So whenever you're looking at the leave of absence, you know, we, we put in our termination based on contracts. And so, you know, as you've kind of probably have come to know, in general, our district is, you know, in general, is continuing contracts. And so anytime there needs to be a change to that continuing contract, we have to terminate it. If we're not, if we're no longer going to continue with a position. And so if you look through some of our leave of absences there, you may see, you know, things that, you know, may say, why is that happening? Or what questions do I have? And it's just because if there is a situation where another individual has moved on to a position, but they had a, a leave of absence at the time that was a part of another contract, we have to terminate that particular contract in order to move forward. And normally, you'll see a leave of absence happen, you know, one or two years. And so that's where you'll see some time that may have passed in regards to a, a particular position. Oh, and last question, sorry. The change of assignment is in general, again, going back to that continuing contract that everybody is on. You know, that just, you're, it's a change of assignment within that continuing contract. And so, for example, if you had a coach or a teacher that changed to just a different assignment within their, within their current job classification, it wouldn't be reissuing them a different contract. It's just a change of assignment. So you'll see those pop up from time to time under that category as well.
Anything further for Kingsley? All right. Then, all those in favor of approving item H, the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. And chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to the next consent agenda item, which is I. And this is bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. And that recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
All right. And discussion? I don't know who.
I did, I pulled, yeah, I pulled it.
I was like, who pulled that?
I did. Michael, can you talk briefly halfway down the page, fifty-four, the first page? I'm guessing that is the turf from the Mid-America Golf and Landscape, Inc.?
That was the company that put on the turf.
Okay. I figured that.
Yep.
Just making sure. Is there anything else on that? Anybody?
And was that, like, it was budgeted, and what was the total amount versus, do you remember?
The total amount was about one point one something. That's not including the soft costs of the architect or design. That's just the installation of the actual material and all of the work at Memorial Stadium.
Do you know if this is the final payment? Is this the second or the final? I was just curious when you said that, because obviously it's not the whole amount.
I think it's the final one.
I think it would be too, but. And Aster, anything else? All right. Seeing nothing further, then all those in favor of approving item I, for bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. And chair votes aye, motion carried. Then item J is our next item, and that is the contract with the Hawkeye Community College for driver's ed. This is on page sixty-two. And I got to get to that motion real quick. It is that the Board of Education approve the driver's education program proposed from Hawkeye Community College for the period of August twenty eighteen through August twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Jesse? And discussion?
Well, and I just basically pulled that to just make aware to the public as far as that we are continuing with driver's education and with Street Smarts as the provider. And that I had heard a couple of people say, well, we don't have driver's ed anymore. And it's, so I just wanted to make sure that, and we also are, you know, allowing reduced fees also, because I know that was an issue at times too. So I just want to also thank Hawkeye to partnering with this so that we can still provide this, you know, concurrently with the district. Because it's a service that really helps our families. So, that's all.
And Sue, we noted at our last meeting that some of our other times and places where we've done in the summer are still available, and after-hours are still available. So there are some options for families as well, just to maintain that, that consistency with the service, so. Anybody have anything further on that contract? All right, well then, seeing none, all those in favor of approving item J, the contract with Hawkeye Community College for driver's education, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Well, that concludes our consent agenda and actually our action items for the evening. So I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Absolutely. Well, first, I would just thank Shanley and Sue for their past year of experience and, and service as the president and vice president. I know that it is, every year I talk about the amount of time and commitment it takes to be a board member. But there is just an added set of, of responsibilities that come with being an officer. And so sometimes I think I, there are weeks that I talk to Shanley every single day about different things, and, and Sue too. And I just really appreciate that. So looking forward to another year of working together.
That's wonderful.
I just wanted to also make a comment about homecoming. You know, we're just finishing up a week with East High Homecoming, which I think went very well. Of course, the game, the score of the game was not what we had hoped. But, you know, the, if, if, if they could win on spirit, they, they would have won. It was just a really, the whole week was really good. I also would just give out a thank you to the people who I also would just give out a thank you to the people who were involved with bringing the Taste of East back. Just a really good crowd, Shanley was able to make it, and, and I know other people as well, and it was, some of us went out. It was just, it was just a really great thing. I, Terrace staff covered it and got some great pictures out there, and the homecoming parade was good, and so it was just a, and I just, you know, applaud the students, they're just wonderful, they really are. It was just, there was a lot of fun and a lot of pride. And then we go into West High Homecoming, and I was out there today, and they're starting their dress-up days and looking forward to a good week as well, so we wish them luck at the game on Friday night as well. We are just finishing up our enrollment for the year, and so we, as people know, for schools in Iowa, the count date is, is always on October one, and so we are spending some time this week just really hammering out details of our, of our enrollment, and so if there's anyone that, you know, is, has any information or has any questions about that, please contact the district. Two, two more things. I would really encourage everyone to make sure that we're using the activity portal that is on our, we, we recognize it all the time, we bring it up all the time, but it really is an amazing way to find out what's going on in the, in the district. So I actually spent some time over the weekend just kind of perusing, just to see all the different things going on, and we do a pretty good job of making sure we get that on there, so whether you are a school staff member or a community member, please go to the Waterloo webpage and look up calendars and look up the activities calendar, and you can see all of the amazing things going on. So there's just, there's something, I mean, every day, there's, you know, twenty to fifty items going on, so it's just a busy, busy place. And finally, it was just, it was a pleasure to host a couple of special events this past couple of weeks. We had the Department of Ed here, looking, they attended Lou Henry and visited and looked at the literacy program and the literacy working, going on, and that was really a great opportunity. And then we hosted the Governor this past week on, actually a week ago today, and she was very, very excited and actually sent a handwritten thank you this week, just, and used some really amazing words like, you know, innovative and passion and, and just visionary, so it was, it was really great to host her, and we were happy to do so, and I think if anybody wants to get out to the Career Center, I hope that they would call our, call our office and let us give you a tour, because it's really some, there's some good things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Alright, I'm gonna start down here on this side of the board. No offense to you, Aster, but I'm gonna start with India tonight, I gotta go with the heavy side of the board, or the board table, so with board comments, so with India.
Yeah, sure. I'm just going to piggyback on what Dr. Lindeman said about homecoming with East and West. I just wanna also applaud the community involvement. Oh, man, it's just that energy to see the community, the businesses, parents, to get on board, just to support those kids when they're going through the parade and all of that, so I just wanna also just applaud the community's efforts to get behind these kids who are doing great things, and big woo-hoo to Waterloo, that's good spirit right there.
Jesse?
See, I had the opportunity to work concessions last week on Sunday for band, and it's neat seeing our field already being utilized, is, I, I don't know how many games a week there are on it, but the turf field is, we're here, middle school games, we got high school games, we got Saturday games, we have youth football playing around Sunday, using the facility, I mean, we said we're gonna jump in and really get the most out of it, and I think we really have helped through that, and offered some really good opportunities. I don't, like I said, one of the bands has been out there to practice on the turf one evening as well, so I mean, it's, I think we, we did a, a good deal where we could get that facility up and going, but also just being heavily used like we expected, so.
Thanks, Jesse. Sue?
Well, I have a whole bunch of things tonight. First of all, I just wanna again thank our Finance, and, and with that, just the thoroughness and the diligently of getting things done, because when the bond vote failed with each, you know, with the community and the Career Tech Center, we have had to make different adjustments and different, and move at a slower pace than what we had anticipated. But I just, that, a lot of getting what's done out there comes to Finance and readjusting and moving it along and making it successful as we go versus our initial intent was to get it all going and roll with it, and so I just think that we have all worked well to try to get that going. And then also, I just, Darrell there, Darren, Darrell, Darren, I know that, but just, you know, the, I guess with our whole staff, it just takes a whole staff to be cohesive to make great things happen like at Highland, so thank you for your work at Highland, and I just wanted to again thank the Highland staff, that that's just an awesome achievement, and just keep up the good work there. Also in today's paper, and I didn't get the link, but there is a, an article on the hip hop group.
Yep.
And trying to get funds to go to China, and they have a GoFundMe page, so if anybody just really would like to help these kids, they could call the Courier, I'm sure we can have it at our desk here, but, you know, every little bit helps, and what an opportunity for these kids to go to China if that becomes a reality, and, and what an awesome program to correlate hip hop and literacy. I mean, just awesome, so. And then also the eighth grade meetings, I've been seeing that advertised, and so if you have an eighth grade student, I don't have all the dates of that, but be sure to go because that, all the opportunities available at the Career Tech Center, just the curriculum, just a, a good insight into start your high school years out effectively and efficiently, so. And I think that was it.
And it's a great way for parents to get their questions answered too, because I know sometimes it's that scary move from high school to, or from middle school to high school, so it's great, so. Anything further? Alright, Aster, you're up.
Finally, no, I'm just. Keeping with the theme of homecoming, I didn't get a chance to visit the Taste of East, but I know my son enjoyed it, I, I heard great things about it. Actually, I think, I went to the game and they were talking about it there, so, and most of the staff are happy that it's back, but I do look forward, as a West High grad, I do look forward to going to the West High Homecoming, and I'd like to publicly congratulate Nicole Hannah Jones, who will be inducted into the West High Athletic, or Academic Hall of Fame, excuse me, and I'm pretty sure that's a, a, a short list, and there's been some great people to come through West High, but, so she'll be here Friday, and I look forward to seeing her, walk the halls with her at West, so, very deserving, very deserving.
I'm so excited that she's actually gonna get to come, because I think we're worried that they're.
Yeah, and she's, she's actually leaving, she'll be here for a couple hours.
Oh.
She's leaving soon after. I think she has a red eye, she has, have to go speak. I'm not sure where, maybe Indiana maybe, but she has to speak Saturday afternoon, so she'll be in and out.
She'll be in and out, but she'll be here, so which is great.
Well, and also, sorry, I had one more thing with, I had a call from an East High baseball player from way back, that's the email I sent you, and just the pride that homecoming brings, and these men are celebrating, they're, they're the only state champ in baseball from Waterloo, ever, in baseball. And they're being inducted into the Optimist Hall of Fame, and just the pride they have of winning that for East High, fifty years ago, and it's like, just, I mean, homecoming brings that up, but just that, you know, these, a lot of, and he, all the coaches have passed away, but of the team members, I believe there was twelve still that were, and, so just, and they're so proud of East High, so.
I do believe West High won state two.
Nineties or something.
Ninety-five, I believe it was, if I'm not mistaken.
He told me they were the ones who won. He was lying.
We don't have to. We don't have to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That's great, so. Alright, anything else, Aster?
No.
Okay. Well, I'm just gonna piggyback quickly on what Jesse said about, I know you said you worked the band concessions, but as a proud band mom, the band season has begun, and on Saturday, the Wahoak Band went to Linmar, took fifth place, and their color guard actually took first place, took the caption, so I wanna give a shout out to those almost two-hundred kids, that is a lot of work, and I know both East and West have several competitions coming up in the next few weeks, so I promise I'll try to report on all those things, but it always makes me proud, I love Go Band, yay! So, and happy homecoming to, to West High, and I also, Aster, wanna just say, I was able to go to the Taste of East, and it's just so cool to, to be outside, and I, I said this to Dr. Lindeman, it's, it was a beautiful day, but also to just stand there and kinda take in all that East High has been and is now, and it was just, it was a really cool thing to do, so I'm really glad that it's back as well.
Oh, can I get one more?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and just, Metro Cross Country Meet is this week.
Oh.
I don't think that's on the calendar, but that's middle school and high school.
Okay.
Thursday yet.
Alright.
So.
Excellent. Alright, so with all those awesome accolades, I just wanna remind our viewing public that we will be back here in this same room at five PM on October eighth for our next board meeting, and in the meantime, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you for the second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, good night and thank you.
She did, she, she said I almost blacked out and they had.